Good.
Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Kankakee Planning Board, October 21st, 2020-25 meeting. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if we could do a roll call. Jose Arturo Barajas. Steve Case. Barry McCracken.
Here.
Chip Roarum.
Here.
Deb Terrell.
Here.
Beverly Hood. Present. We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the September 16th, 2025 minutes? Are there any corrections, comments, changes?
Chip Roarum, so moved.
Barry McCracken, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Chip Roarum and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Barry?
Yes.
Chip Roarum?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Communications?
So the major variance for the industrial paving requirements at Stanford and Grinnell was approved at October 6th council meeting. The tax amendments to require the conditional use permit in industrial districts was approved last night at council. The conditional use permit for above-ground floor dwellings at 909 North Fifth Avenue was approved at the city council meeting on October 6th. The conditional use permit for motor vehicles, sales and services used at 382 North Schuyler was approved at the October 6th city council meeting. And the map amendment that we did along Hickory and Indiana, South Indiana and South Dearborn was approved at city council on October 6th. And then, I just have a couple things. I mean, some of this we might be able to talk about at the end. I will say that the mayor did make an announcement last night at the city council meeting about planning board members just kind of asking for interest to the public. I'm also working with his office to make sure we have kind of a, an idea moving forward about how to get the request out there publicly. And I don't have anything yet on the agenda for next month, but they seem to roll in, so we'll see.
All right, new business, case PB 2025-10-1. A public hearing for a major variance to allow for a residential accessory garage to be constructed in the front yard beyond the front building line of the principal structure for certain real property commonly known as 950 Westwood Road, Kankakee, Illinois. And this is in the third ward. If the applicant for this case is present, if you would please come forth. And all three of you are going to be speaking?
We will be, yes.
Okay, if I could, have you all raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if each one of you could state your name for the record, for the recorder, please?
That's Gregory Deck, attorney for Petting House Corporation on this matter.
Mike Steffick, CFO, Petting House Corporation.
And Jeff Jarvis, architect.
All right. And each time you speak, would you say your name for the recorder, please? So who's up?
I'll start off here. So as, as you know here, there's a petition filed here asking for a major variance, which is just to be able to locate a detached three-car garage in what would, in most neighborhoods, be the front yard of this house. Because of its river-facing, as we're going to find out in a minute, sometimes front and backyards are reversed in everybody's minds. So, so that's the request that we have here. And so I'm, our first witness is Michael Steffick. If you step up a little closer and we'll share this microphone. And you just tell us your position with Petting House Corporation?
Chief Financial Officer.
And this relates to the property at 950 Westwood Road in Kankakee, correct?
Correct.
And that's a single-family residence?
Yes.
And it's located in Westwood subdivision, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And Westwood is just north of Riverside Medical Center along Wall Street, is that correct?
Yes.
And is, most of that, that subdivision are single-family residences? Is that also correct?
That's correct, yes.
As far as you can tell, that would be the trend of development as well, because everything seems to be residential.
Yes.
And how does Petting House use this residence?
Yeah, so we have a lot of customers, visitors that come, sometimes in large groups. So, a lot of times internationally, so they'll stay in the residence. Also used for employees. From time to time, we have out-of-state employees are traveling for training and things like that. Larger groups, we utilize the house. Occasionally for some events too, but that's not as frequent. But usually for visitors is when we utilize it.
And all those uses, though, still remain single-family, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And is this house along the Kankakee River?
Yes.
And the, can you just, have you been to this property before?
Yes.
Can you describe a little bit, if you were standing in the rear of the residence, what you would see out the rear of that residence?
Yeah, at the rear, there's a, there's a lot of trees, but there's a pretty clear view of the river. There's a lot of slope to it, but it's, you know, a scenic spot, I would say.
And does the residence contain right now any kind of garage?
Currently, there is an attached garage, yes.
And is that a two-car garage?
Two-car, yes.
And is the plan to close off that garage for vehicles and convert it to living space and then erect a detached three-car garage?
Correct. It's a smaller garage that can't fit certain vehicles. Actually going to utilize it for more living space and then construct a separate garage that has more capacity.
And, it's kind of hard to see, but on the, on the diagram that's on the screen there, that garage is indicated, it's like, got some squares, that's kind of like the driveway part of the garage or whatever. The structure of the garage is outlined in dark in kind of the right-hand side of that drawing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And can you tell us in general why that location is, was selected by Petting House as being the most, the best location on that property for a detached garage?
Yeah, anything behind the property, for one, there's a lot of trees and there's a lot of slope to it. And plus, it obstructs the view of the river, so that wouldn't be ideal. You know, there's also a shed in place there to the right of the house, so it's kind of placed up front where it's kind of out of the way of everything else, on a level ground and easily accessible.
And it was, the backyard was not selected or not able to be utilized for that very well because of the blocking of the view of the river, is that correct? And the slope and the trees, all those factors all go into that, and that's why the question's for the variance, is that correct?
Yes.
And, what sort of impact do you expect that that construction of a three-car garage on that property would have on the value of that property or in the neighborhood? Would it have any impact, you believe?
I mean, my belief would be that it would improve the look of the community and, and if anything, have a positive impact.
That's all that I have from here. And Jeff? Jarvis is the architect. He kind of designed this. You want to just give a little overview of what you did and how this all got arrived at as well, please?
And if you could say your name again, Jarvis?
Jeff Jarvis. This has been, the whole redevelopment and remodeling of the home's been going on for quite a few years. I wish I could tell you how many, because I forget. But the, the last project was finishing off the kitchen this last year. They expanded it and remodeled it some, so it improved that. And yet to come is this modification to the garage, which is actually a very tight garage and a bit small, so I think that'll be fine for some living space. So I think that's what triggered the client to want to do the detached garage. And when we did early studies, we were actually looking at facing the garage and bringing out a driveway toward, toward the street. I talked them out of that and I thought this would be a better, better approach, use the existing driveway. So it's at least less cumbersome to the, to the neighborhood as well. This is a better orientation. What we found too was, as we found some covenants and setbacks, you almost see three setback lines. The, the city ordinance is the, only a thirty, is only a 30-foot setback. And, and you can see that on the first dash line off the property line. The second dash line is a neighborhood setback. And that is 50 feet. And that's pretty far back as it is, because it is a big property. And the third setback was something we found buried in the, something about the property said something about 75 feet. And I think this, this home was, I think, one of the small family owned the property originally. So the 75-foot setback seems very extreme and wasn't going to work. There's, there's some other underground and above-ground items that we really couldn't push the, the building back much further. So this was a good compromise, still meets the neighborhood setback and by far meets the city setback.
Any questions, commissioners?
Deb Terrell, I have a question. This is a residential property, Zoned R1, single-family residential, correct?
Yep, yes, it is.
But it's used by Petting House to host guests for the corporation?
Yeah, so visitors, whether they're employees or customers, use it. There's, yeah, that's, that's the use of it.
Okay.
It's not rented in any way, shape or form, it's all exclusively corporate and then kind of family and employees, employees and people like that. So it's not a, it's not a transient facility by any means.
No. Okay. I always enjoy Greg Deck being with us. It's like being in a courtroom, you know? Every I is dotted, every T is crossed, and I've never once got to yell objection. How many trees do you think you'll be removing?
Jeff Jarvis, I'm going to say, I don't know.
According to the photograph, I think zero trees to remove it there.
Okay.
It's a nice flat.
Excellent.
Nice flat area there, you know, it does not appear any trees and.
Barry McCracken, so what is the size of the garage?
Trying to recollect, could you zoom to the?
It's 20 by 44.
There you go. Thank you, Derek.
And those boxes in front of the garage, is that driveway?
I think that's just pavement indication. Are those like score marks or something?
That's just concrete, with joints in it, yeah.
Any other questions?
Chip Roarum, I'm curious about, I understand, you know, not wanting to put the garage back on the Riverside things. And I'm just wondering, is there any reason why it couldn't be slid back to the, the most extreme 75-foot? It looks like it might even line up with that little island that's there. What's your thinking on that?
Jeff Jarvis again. That little square is actually a well pump that irrigates the property.
Yeah. All right, so they have, they have city water and a well?
Yes.
I see. Yeah, well, that makes sense to not do that. Okay, thank you. One other thing, have you considered the possibility of screening the garage with additional new landscape to soften its impact on, on the street?
I don't think we know the answer to that. From my own personal, I took a trip there myself. It's, the right-hand side of that drawing is all kind of like a wooded area. It's bare right now, obviously, but it has natural screening from the neighbor to the, the neighbor, I guess would be to the south. I've spoken to that neighbor, they have no objections, as long as they don't, we don't block the view of the river for them. And that's why we're doing the front yard.
I will say, Chip, the picture on page 11, which I took when I drove by, it shows that, that tree line goes all the way up to the pavement behind their mailbox. So I think if you look at this with a sight plane and imagine that, I think that there really already is a natural vegetation buffer. This is the second picture on page 11.
I see, I see it, I see it. I mean, this is really a suggestion more than anything else. Knowing that Petting House has spent substantial time with the landscape around their buildings, that this seems to be an opportunity. I hope that we'll at least consider it.
Any other questions, comments? I'll open up public hearing. If anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against or have comments on this case, you may do so at this time. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, are you ready to act?
I will. I, in case PB 2025-10-1, the request for a major variance to allow for a residential accessory garage to be constructed in the front yard beyond the front building line of the principal structure for real property commonly known as 950 Westwood Road, Kankakee, Illinois. I would like to move that we approve this request. And we can attach the findings as set forth by the planning department. I think it handily meets all of the findings, including hardship, which is kind of rare. And I would like to attach the following requirements, that all requirements of the City of the Kankakee Fire Department and the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement Division should be satisfied prior to the commencement or prior to occupancy of the residential unit. The applicant shall obtain the required permits and comply with all provisions of the zoning ordinance and the building code of the City of Kankakee.
Second.
And we have a motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Barry McCracken. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call. Chip Roarum?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes. The variance is granted.
Thank you for your consideration, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. Next case, PB 2025-10-2. A public hearing for a major variance to waive the requirement to provide the one parking stall for a short-term rental and a conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental in a dwelling located on a property that is Zoned R1, single-family for certain real property commonly known as 441 West Hawkins Street, Kankakee, Illinois. And this is in the fourth ward. And the applicant is before us. If you could raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name?
Dustin Coy.
All right, Mr. Coy, if you could tell us about your case?
Okay, like you said, good evening. I'm here seeking a conditional use permit to operate the short-term rental at 441 West Hawkins. Also seeking the variance for the parking requirement needed for the short-term rental. I'm pretty sure you guys are all familiar with the property. I was here just last month, so I'm just here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions?
Chip Roarum, Dustin, I'm, I'm curious about the parking. In my, you know, use of Airbnbs and stuff like that, you know, having a parking place close to the building that I can go from my car into the facility is a boon. I mean, it's, it's an advantage. And there is space to, to do that.
Yeah, there is space. We just finished the backyard. We installed a deck, repaved the whole, or landscaped the whole yard. In order to put a parking spot, we may lose our tree or we may lose our deck in the backyard. I've been in that property for the last six months while we're rehabbing it. I was able to pull my van, my dump trailer, plus one guy behind me, parking right there in front of the house on the street. We never had any issues with parking. I also own a, own a house across the street as well. And kitty corner there, it's on Fourth and Hawkins. And we've never had an issue with parking there. So I don't think many people are utilizing the street parking.
So in your opinion, you don't believe that an additional parking spot is required? I see that there is space in the northwest corner to install a parking space?
Yeah, we would have to rip out, we would have no yard left there, basically. Yes, we could possibly put one there. We had to rip out our fence and rip out the yard we just put in, so.
What would be the access to that space, the alley?
So.
I, I've been over there a couple times, last month, a couple times, last night. And last night, it was like, probably 10 o'clock, presumably a time when most cars would be parked for the night. And there were no cars anywhere.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I'd rather not see a parking pad on such a small property and more green space. The addition, you know, I'm always about having more permeable surface because we do deal with stormwater runoff and so forth. I think adding a concrete surface to a space that's small feels unnecessary, given the circumstances.
I would have to agree. I mean, I think we, our last variance here was for the lot size for the property. I think the minimum lot size was around 6,000 square feet in order to rebuild. A lot size is only 4,000 square feet, so it'd take about a substantial amount of the yard.
One last thing about the parking. If, if for some reason, you know, the need arises for you, you could use permeable pavement.
Yeah, I've done that in the past for that.
Or you could have a lawn that you can drive onto, should that be the case?
Yeah, we've used that in the past. It's just, it's an option. It's quite costly.
Oh, yeah, yeah. How do you find it, though, in terms of maintenance?
We just installed it last year at a property. Maintenance to, to be determined, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Was there any communication on this?
I, so I did get a call from a neighbor who doesn't live next door, but got a letter, so she's within the, the distance. She and her husband were just calling to see if, like, who it was and if they ran a business in town, like if they had lots of these units or if it was just a one-off and just kind of wanted to know about the business owner more than anything. And I did, I just told her that the owner had quite a few units in town. And, I mean, many of the units are really nice. The ones on West Avenue are beautiful. And she didn't have any concerns. She, I mean, that's literally, that was the conversation. And I don't know, I think Dustin has spoken with another person. I've not spoken with this lady, but I think there was a conversation with someone.
Yeah, she was, she was concerned about the parking. I guess there was a guest that may have parked in the wrong spot, maybe in the driveway next door. I told her, it can't fix anything that I'd never heard about, so it was the first time I heard about it. I told her I'd be willing to install a sign on her property next to that driveway saying there's no parking for our house. I'd also be willing to include it in our check-in instructions, because when a guest books, they get check-in instructions. I've never knew that anyone's parking there, but I'm adding it to there now. I also told her I'd install a sign at the front door of the property, alerting guests that they can't park next door, and if they do, they'll be towed. So.
Chip Roarum, I have some questions about short-term rental. I may be out of, out of focus here in terms of where we are with that as far as.
You're okay. Ask away.
Yeah, so the last time short-term rental came up here, it was, you know, my recollection was that we didn't have anything that described short-term rental. And it was, it was something that we would have to develop.
So I think when we brought this up at the last meeting, I had, since I've been here for a year, I haven't reviewed a short-term rental license. And I haven't spent a lot of time in this section of the code reading it, right? So, and I found out kind of late that this was going to be, I didn't have it ahead of the, the hearing, otherwise we would have had all this on the same agenda, because that's what I tried to do. So then, and I think that night, what I, I think what I had was the actual chapter regulation. And so one of the things I missed is that, this is our handout that's on our website. It is not the chapter direct from the code. It's like, it's a compilation that Mike did a while back. So when I came last month, last month, I printed out quickly the regulation from the chapter. So what's missing is actually like the, the requirement for the conditional use permit and the definitions for all those different types of short-term rentals, which is what we kind of got, I think, stuck on last time, trying to figure out what they, what they meant and what his was and what would be required. And so you have this copy here at your desk if you wanted to look at it. But one of the things, and I'm not sure if this is your question at all, Chip, but is like, in the actual chapter regulations, there's no mention of a requirement for conditional use permit. You literally have to go to the definition chapter in the beginning of the zoning ordinance and find the definition for short-term rental commercial and read that it requires you to get a conditional use permit. I mean, I missed it that night when we were looking at it, you know, because I had no idea. And I'm like looking in here and the chapter regulations, 3.14, don't mention anything. And really, I think that regulation should be moved into, into the actual like, chapter on short-term rental, so you don't lose it. Is, is that what you were talking about? Is that confusion that we brought up last time? There are regulations, though, and there's a whole bunch of conditions.
Thank you for bringing me up to speed. But, but, you know, the thing is, is that I would urge us to move forward on making this a clearer component of the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
You know, because the way I'm looking at this right now, with the specific property, it's going to be well-maintained, facilities management is not a problem. As far as parking is concerned, short-term rentals, I mean, you're talking about somebody's going to be in front of that house with a vehicle for a day or two, maybe. And so it's not really a bigger burden as if it were a place that somebody stayed at all the time. But I, you know, I would like, I would like us to clarify short-term rental better within the context of the ordinance, you know, so that we, we can have more expectations, more, you know, defined as people come in. Because this is by far not going to be the last time we hear about short-term rental.
No, and in fact, so I am not, I was not previously part of the review process for them. The licensing happens out of ECDA, Barbie's office. Leo is the first point of contact and he's the one, I think, I'm not sure if they've always issued it out of that office or if it's being issued out of code, but you also apply with, like, something in the process, like it ends up at code. Code is tracking them in our database, so they are, there's only three that I see in the system right now that we've ever issued. I think the other, the other two are R1. I'm just going to say. And I, I had no idea that they were even. And I, I had no idea that they were even reviewed, you know, so Barbie and I have been talking about that process, and inserting me into that process so that I can do a zoning review on them and make sure that we're catching these. The, and then I think, like, I mean, it's, it's, it's clear on the website, like, this regulation has the definitions included in it, if you open the handout. I don't know if the application also says it. It probably should, but that would be helpful, too.
I think it's an opportunity to.
Yeah.
Improve our position.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep. I also know that we have not, like, I think that there was a discussion about grandfathering in any existing Airbnbs that were already in operation, and I'm not sure that that outreach has happened to figure out who, which one of those units had already been in operation. I don't think that's happened.
All right. One other thing, too, that lights up when I start thinking about stuff like this, is the whole concept of accessory dwelling units, of ADUs, in terms of, because there seems to be a transformation of how people are thinking about those now. And, and as we do that with ADUs and short-term occupancy, I think that whole thing is just sort of a separate set of conditions that, that we would benefit, I believe, by focusing on.
Yeah, I do think, so.
I looked at your guidance.
The accessory short-term rental, which is, like, if it was like an ADU on the property.
Right.
It's treated differently, has less requirements, doesn't require a conditional use permit, even an R1, R2, but everything else in this, the chapter would be applicable. I mean, I'm not sure if you're thinking that those should be lesser for those types of units? Is that what you're thinking? Oh, no, okay.
I just think there might be more possible guidance that we could give in terms of what we would like to see to ensure that we have a quality of a built environment that relates to this.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, you know, it's just enhancing the quality of the built environment is what I'm concerned about.
The architecture, the green space, all of it?
Yeah, the same, the same concerns that we have for the rest of our residential requirements, you know, to make sure that that's something that we talk about.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, this is the beginning of a conversation.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Anything else? The public hearing is open. If there's anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this case, you may do so at this Seeing none, public hearing is closed. And I have one question.
Yeah.
On the conditions of short-term rental licensing, number seven, on page three. It reads, "Prior to starting the short-term rental, the property owner shall send out a written notice to the owner of all immediate abutting properties." And then in the next sentence, it reads, "These letters have to be sent out after the business license?"
So, are you on, which, are you on the last page where I formatted them?
No.
Okay, so this first part in page three is straight from the code. Like, so I put this in here, it's straight from the code. I totally agree that this is awkward, right? I was like reading it, and I'm like, well, that's just silly. I think that the, I mean, I don't know, I wasn't here when these regulations were passed, but this is literally what's in the code.
Ah.
So, I mean, I feel like if the intention is to let them know and get feedback, that's not what this is for, though, because they're not going to get an opportunity to call and say, "I don't want this."
Right.
They can't, I mean, that's what this would be. So if we wanted that opinion, all of, all of these would need to require a conditional use permit. There's many situations where it would not require a conditional use permit. And so you wouldn't, you know what I mean? You wouldn't have an opportunity for testimony.
Mm-hmm.
I know. Yeah, so they do, they go out, like, after, because they have to have the business license number on them, so that you already get it, it's already been issued.
Okay. All right, that's, that was the only question I had. Go ahead.
No, I have no comment. I just, I kind of agree, like, the public notice would suffice as their notification that this is going to be an Airbnb, so.
It's just letting them know, and giving them information of who to contact. It's really more of like a, hey, this is your, yeah, I think that's what the intention is here, but.
Okay.
I also have none of these letters on any of ours, so, just so you know.
All right, go ahead.
How many bedrooms does this?
This property's two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms?
Yep, so.
How many people do you typically get staying there?
Uh, it fits four comfortably, but we say four to six. The only reason we say up to six is because a lot of people travel with little kids, and we provide additional bedding underneath the bed, you know? We don't want large parties, we don't want large gatherings there, but usually four to six, so. There's two, I believe each room has a queen bed.
And how long is the typical stay?
It depends. We've had guests for two to three weeks, then we have guests for just two nights, so. We're getting a lot of people here, traveling for, traveling nurses, people working on the windmills, CSL, things like that, so.
Interesting.
And like, in my opinion, I, I'm starting to prefer the short-term rentals, just because less evictions, for one. I believe we're able to maintain the property a little bit better. Wear and tear's less, because we're in there constantly cleaning. I actually prefer them right now.
That maintenance thing is kind of a, one hand washing the other, because if you use this as a rental property, long-term with a lease, and the renters didn't take care of the property, it would look terrible, but if you don't take care of it, you don't get people staying there, because you don't get the stars.
Yeah. We got to keep it to a higher standard, yes.
All right, are we ready to act?
Yes, ready to go. Regarding case PB 2025-10-2, a request for, one, a major variance to waive the requirement to provide the one parking stall for the short-term rental license, and, two, a conditional use permit. Do we need to do these as two separate things?
We should, and I think Beverly and I were talking about this, that we should maybe do the variance first, because I was just wasn't sure how the planning board would act, and, yeah.
All right, so I'll stop, two, just retract that, two, so. I move that we recommend that, oh, on a major variance, we don't recommend.
No.
We, we, we say to approve or not approve. We approve the variance based upon the fact that there were no negative public comments, that the conditions for a short-term rental licensing are in compliance, and the findings of staff find this acceptable. I, I, I recommend that we approve this.
Okay, we have a motion by Chip Warren. A second by Deb Tyrrell. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Chip Warren?
Yes.
Deb Tyrrell?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes, variance is granted.
Now, the second part of this.
Okay. Yep, just lost my thing. Okay, again, PB 2025-10-1.
10-2.
10-2, excuse me.
You're good.
Thank you very much. A conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental in a dwelling unit located on a property that is Zoned R1, single-family for certain real property commonly known as 441 West Hawkins Street, Kankakee, Illinois, in the 4th Ward. I recommend that we recommend the conditional use permit.
And if you can read into record the conditions of the short-term rental licensing?
Sure, thank you. I agree.
I think it's on page, um.
Three?
Not three. I would read page, hmm, seven?
Can we read that into the, into the minutes?
Yeah, and then I would, don't include 14.
Correct.
Can I read those for the record?
Yes, there's 13.
Subject to any testimony provided at the public hearing, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to operate a commercial short-term rental in a dwelling located on a property that is Zoned R1, single-family zoning district for certain real property commonly known as 441 West Hawkins Street, subject to the following conditions. Number one, all requirements of the City of Kankakee Fire Department, Kankakee County Health Department, and the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement Division shall be satisfied prior to commencement, prior to operation as a short-term rental. Two, the applicant shall obtain the required permits and comply with all provisions of the zoning ordinance and building code of the City of Kankakee. Three, the applicant shall obtain and maintain applicable rental, housing, and/or business licensing with the City of Kankakee. Four, comply with all required short-term rental regulations in Section 3.15 of the zoning ordinance. Five, no building alterations that change the residential character of the dwelling. Six, occupancy shall be determined by the fire department. Seven, guests shall not create noise, smoke, smell, electrical interference, fire hazard, or any other nuisance or hazard. Eight, storage of material shall be inside the principal building, accessory storage building, or hidden from plain sight. Nine, prior to starting the short-term rental, the property owner shall send out a written notice to the owner of all immediate abutting properties of the subject lot, see 3.15 Short-Term Rental Regulations. Ten, short-term rental shall be equipped with fire protection equipment and systems, and be inspected by the fire department. Eleven, all refuse and waste must be properly covered and stored. Twelve, no signage allowed on the premises, except for the signage that we discussed Thirteen, owners may only use social media advertisement platforms registered with the city, and must provide staff with required account information. Fourteen, if the variance for parking is not granted.
Don't read that one.
We don't need that one.
Wouldn't need to read that. That's why it's in gray. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. We have a second?
I'll second, but I'd like to clarify, number eight. Well, it could be number eight or 11, but I see in the photographs that the garbage cans are out on the alley. Where do the garbage cans stay when they're not placed out for pickup?
We are limited on options there. Right now, honestly, they're staying by the alley. There's like a little short fence there, pushed up against the fence.
I don't like that.
I, I don't like it either.
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Chip Warren, and a second by Deb Tyrrell. Any questions, comments? Roll call. Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Chip Warren?
Yes.
Deb Tyrrell?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes. The conditional use is recommended for approval, and should be on the November 3rd City Council agenda.
Thank you. See you next month.
Hopefully not. Let's not do that. Happy Thanksgiving.
Case PB 2025-10-3, a public hearing for a conditional use permit to operate a major home occupation beauty salon esthetician for certain real property commonly known as 343 South May Avenue, Kankakee, Illinois, in the 3rd Ward. Is the applicant present? Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state your name for the record?
Lindsay Haddon.
You can speak a little louder.
Lindsay Haddon.
All right, if you could tell us about your case, please.
I just wanted to get a conditional use permit to run a esthetician business out of my home.
Okay.
I will only service one client at a time, so it won't affect parking or anything like that as well.
Any questions, commissioners?
Are you planning to have any signage outside indicating that there's a business?
No. No, yeah, it will just be for mainly people I know. I don't plan on really advertising it to public and having people I don't know in my home.
I'm assuming that you're licensed?
Yes, I've been licensed for over 18 years.
Oh, wow.
So you've got another job?
Yes, yes. So this is just side income. I do have a main source of income, and also a part-time job.
What do you do for a part-time job?
I work out of my home at Cigna Healthcare.
Have you had a chance to talk to the building department about the requirements for basically a commercial, you know, environment that?
Yes.
This would really be?
Yes, the fire department is doing an inspection, and then I did call sanitation, but they said I didn't need to do anything with them, since I don't handle food. So, as long as I get this approved, that's all that I would need, in addition to my business licenses and all of those things that I already have.
The fire department may, and the building department might as well, be concerned about getting in and out of the building safely, should there be any kind of a problem. So be ready for that.
Okay, yes, I will be.
There are no other questions? I'll open up public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this case, you may do so at this time. Public hearing closed. Any other questions, commissioners? You ready to move?
Case PB 2025-10-3, the request for a conditional use permit to operate a major home occupation for a certain real property commonly known as 343 South May Avenue, Kankakee. I would like to make a motion that we recommend approval of this conditional use permit, as it doesn't appear to have any opposition, and I'll attach the findings as set forth by the staff. Also, all requirements of the City of Kankakee Fire Department, the County Health Department, and the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement Division should be satisfied prior to the commencement of business. The applicant should obtain the required permits and comply with all provisions of the zoning ordinance and the building code of the City of Kankakee. And the applicant shall obtain and maintain a home occupation business license with the City of Kankakee.
We have a motion by Deb Tyrrell, and a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Chip Warren?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Deb Tyrrell?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes. The conditional use is recommended for approval, and will be on the November 3rd City Council agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. Case PB 2025-10-4, a public hearing for text amendments to the Kankakee zoning ordinance, Chapter 8, commercial zoning districts, and in Appendix A, planned and conditional uses by zoning district. So, this. So, this was, these sections of the code were brought to my attention when actually I was reviewing Dustin Coys' above-ground-floor dwelling unit conditional use permit. I think I actually also noticed it when I took, when we took the Jeffers Project through, because there was an inconsistency. Theirs was Zone C3, and the district regulations allowed for the conditional, or required the conditional use permit, but the table, if you notice, doesn't have anything in it. So if it's blank, it's technically prohibited on the table. So that was like the inconsistency in C3. So, I noticed, but I noticed the C2 regulations when I reviewed that 909 North Fifth Project. So you can see on this screen, the C2 regulations didn't have any, they listed it in the table. The C was in the table, requiring the conditional use permit for the above-ground-floor dwellings, but the regulations that we find in C1 and C3, those four bullet points, they're the same in both of those other districts, were not there in the district regulations. So all I've done here is just copied this section that you see that was in C1, and it's also been added to C2. Okay, so it's just, that's a mirror. And then, in this section, this is the C3 section, there's also this paragraph in the beginning of C3 that talks about these residential units being accessory, and that they are subject to a conditional use permit. I thought that there was something in here about, oh, this one has... I need to make an edit in here, I just realized. So the C3 regulations show the 800 square feet. Do you see that red that's marked out? It's like right here, I just realized I missed this. So like, it says 800, but this is the regulation that I think that we mean in all these districts, don't you think? I mean, C3, if anything, and Chip, you can weigh in, because architecturally, I can't imagine we would want them to be larger in our downtown area. I can't ima, I think this is a typo. So, this will need to be, I'll need to edit this before it goes to council, so that this is in blue. This will be new text, and then it'll show the 800. Well, this has already been marked out, so I'll just add the blue there. Yeah. And then, I added the word accessory to all of these sections right here in the beginning, instead of having this long sentence that talks about them being accessory. I thought that might be easier and simpler. And that's pretty much it. And then I added the C to the table, where it's above-ground dwelling, above-ground-floor dwelling units in the C3 district, which is right there. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, let me know.
I have a question about the parking.
Mm-hmm.
Under CD, parking space for the exclusive use of said residential use shall be provided in full compliance with the provisions of Chapter 10, parking and loading. So, a person could not have a living space above their business if they can't provide an exclusive parking space?
Unless they get, maybe like, how we dealt with the variance here tonight on Dustin's situation. Yeah, I think we would want to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
So when I did, when we did review the one for 909 North Fifth, I did, now, this says exclusive, so that means it should be dedicated, price signed and all that. We didn't do that with Dustin's, but I did incorporate it into the numbers, like the requirement for his commercial space, I calculated that, and also had the calculation for the residential units, and there was enough parking for all of those land uses on the, in the parking lot, so we had the numbers accounted for. I guess whether or not we want to start requiring some kind of exclu, I mean, because exclusive basically means that it's dedicated, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It'd have to be marked, or...
Assigned. I'm used to seeing the word assigned, rather than exclusive, but...
Yeah, it could be assigned, it could be assigned. You know, that would say that it's for specific use.
Yeah.
One other thing that comes up with me regarding the parking, because I had a similar concern about parking, had to do with something that we talked about, about downtown Kankakee having an abundance of parking. And that was, when Mike was talking about it, was a place where we might be able to consider reducing the number of onsite spots in deference to the parking that is available throughout the business district. Does that offer, you know, for that portion of where somebody might be living above the store, does that, is that something that might be, we could, we could work into?
It already is. So, the way that this is written, so we do have a downtown parking district. In Chapter 10, which is mentioned here, there's a map, and so if you fall into that category, there's a different requirement for parking in downtown. It's already been reduced. Commercial, non-residential uses are no requirement, which is amazing. I mean, I can't tell you how wonderful that is from an economic development standpoint, because parking really is like a linchpin, like it's a problem for new businesses when they're trying to relocate, and I understand the need for parking, I totally get it, but I think that many times, regulations are, they're, because they're averages, do you know what I mean? They, they don't address every single land use, and they don't, so they're, they're over-exaggerated oftentimes, and so you do end up with a lot more parking than you actually need. So, anyways, in the planning world, park minimums going away is like on trend right now. Like, many communities are abolishing them across the entire municipalities. I was just sitting with somebody at APA, who I used to work with, and he worked, he's the Assistant Director in Oak Forest, and they just banned, or they just got rid of all their parking minimums. So it's very progressive of the city, I think, to have done that in the downtown area for commercial, for the non-residential land uses. I think for rez, it's one. I think it's one instead of two. So, yeah. But that's, I think it's a new change that was done under Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but I think because this code says, in compliance with Chapter 10, those apply.
Okay.
Depending on a case-by-case basis where the property's located.
Well, we have to read that into any requests that are made of us?
You don't have to. I mean, these requirements are required. I mean, they have to be met.
I'm thinking about it.
So we did for, I think we did for Dustin's. I don't, I can't remember, but I, like, I just did it for the short-term rental, and I think what I found is that our attorneys are looking for them, actually, so like, they've been adding those requirements in anyway, because they're in the code. So I, I think that's why I started doing with the short-term rental, just grabbing those specific regulations and putting them in here. I can't remember if we did it for Dustin's property or not.
Okay. I mean, the thing that Deb was talking about, about signage, you know, designated parking, you know, in terms of what's going on, if we are in the downtown district, it seems as though we don't need to do that?
Mm-hmm, I would agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay. So basically, there aren't any big changes here, this is just administrative corrections?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this? And I'll open up public hearing in case someone has any questions or comments on this. You may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. We need a motion on this.
I'll be ready. PB, regarding case number PB 2025-10-4, a request to consider text amendments to the Kankakee zoning ordinance. Proposed changes are throughout the ordinance, Chapter 8, Commercial Zoning Districts, and Appendix A, Planned and Conditional Uses by Zoning District. We are recommending that City Council review and approve this. Well, I'm saying that we would, would request that City Council approve it, recommend that. And I would like to include the sections for conditional uses about the C1 Commercial Zoning District. I would like to have the service commercial zoning district, C2, conditions, added to that. And I would also like to have the general provisions as edited, added to this request. And specifically, that the parking of one space per dwelling unit be modified, or be recognized that in the downtown area, that that is not necessarily required.
He made a motion. Okay, so we need a second.
Second.
I'll second, go.
A second by Deb Terrell. A motion was made by Chip Warham and a second by Deb Terrell. Any questions or comments? Roll call. Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Warham?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes. The text amendments are recommended for approval. They will be on the November 3rd City Council agenda. Okay, we have old business, which is a concept discussion regarding a potential map amendment from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Two-Family Residential to allow for the construction of a duplex and a major variance to reduce the required rear setback on certain real property located at 490 West Country Drive, Kankakee, Illinois, located in the seventh ward. So we're going to have a discussion in regards to this property. And the owner is here tonight, and if I say your name wrong, I apologize, but it's Dr. Akintilo? Is that Akintilo?
Yes.
Okay. If you would raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name for the record?
Latunji Akintilo.
All right, if you could tell us about your, your case.
Yes, I'm submitting a petition to apply for map amendment, for a rezoning of Lot 21, the Sunnyside subdivision in Kankakee, R1 to R2, to allow the building of the duplex building at that location.
Okay. I just realized I didn't include the old one, which would have maybe been helpful to look at. But if you can remember, I don't know if there were, were any planning board members that were not here that night. I, this was quite a long time ago, I feel like it was in August, maybe?
August, yes.
The footprint was much larger than this, and it was, I think, tripping up every setback, as well as lot coverage. Can't remember, I'm pretty sure, lot coverage. It was also a two-story?
Yes.
Which is also, you know, from a character perspective, that's a lot of building, not just on footprint, but also on the streetscape. So, after the meeting, the applicant sent me another footprint and another potential, and I told him that, so tonight, we actually don't have a formal petition, this is just concept discussion, so, but I think he was looking for some feedback from the planning board on whether or not the rezoning would be something we would even consider here, and then this type of housing structure here. I personally think from the road, it's attractive, and is much more smaller scale, obviously, and would fit in better with the neighborhood. It obviously is a very long footprint, so it goes pretty far back into the yard, but I do think it has, the way it's oriented, it has green space still on the property, so, and you can also see that with, I think the lot coverage is under the allowable for the district, so, or the building coverage, is what it's called, so. Does anybody have any comments?
Chip Warham, and I'm looking at some of the limitations of this neighborhood. They would be the fact that we don't have alleys, like we do in a lot of our neighborhoods, that would allow us to have parking in the rear, that would not require that we park in the front yard. I don't see any way around that for this thing, so the parking requirement is met by where your parking places are, but I think they would benefit substantially by some trees and landscaping to be able to soften that appearance. Because, you know, you look at, you look at the unit itself, it looks great, but at the same time, you know, with the parking in front of it, it's somewhat obscured, so consequently, softening the Boulevard, the Parkway, all of that, you know, the Parkway with additional landscaping, I think, would be very useful.
I guess my concern is similar or adjacent. I didn't see how this could be done without the removal of some large trees. How many trees do you expect to have to take out in order to build this?
The trees in front will be preserved, but there are several trees on the lot by itself, so, maybe like two or three that would actually...
How would the trees in front be preserved if you're planning parking spaces there?
Because they are really widely spaced, so go design the landscaping around that.
I think you could try, that would be noble. I would worry, I think, I would, Deb, I would worry about that, the very big one, right?
Yeah, that's a high-quality tree, and I just hate to see it taken out, and I don't like the idea of parking in front of the building. There's, there's a little four-unit over on Merchant, I think it is, right behind the Dairy Queen, that faces the street and has the parking coming straight in, towed in toward the building, and it's just so unattractive to have a row of vehicles sitting right in front of the building. You, you can't see any of the, you know, they have like flowerpots and flower boxes and stuff on their porch, you can't even see them because of the cars parked there, and it's a little tricky when they back out of their parking spaces. I've had to park there a couple of times when I've been there for, for something, and it's difficult to back out into traffic when you're on a corner like that, and I know this corner really well, because I take this route out a lot, and people drive so fast along there, and the stop signs get ignored, it's, I don't know, I don't know about the parking, I have concerns about that.
I will say the one thing, kind of, that's different than some of our neighborhoods, is that this neighborhood doesn't have alleys, you know, and many of the driveways are in the front, so this is just like more units, because we're not really accustomed to seeing that many units, but that is a difference in this neighborhood, I would say. I did try to like orient this different, you know, like I tried to lay it out parallel to the north property line, and parallel to the south property line, and there's really not a good way to move that parking internal to the site either, like you, because with this type of parking, you would have to meet the parking requirements, which are going to be a backup, you know, drive aisle, and it's not going to, you're not going to be able to do it like you would, like a normal residential driveway. So it just becomes really difficult, and I think you would end up with a lot more impervious, Deb.
Mm-hmm.
So...
I'm wondering, too, where you're going to put four dumpsters, four...
Oh, yeah.
...to recycle and two trash containers, that with room for the garbage trucks to come and empty them, because they don't have guys that get out of the truck anymore and run up and get them, they pick them up with...
Yep.
You know, in a, you know, in a, you know, a wooden fence or, or...
Mm-hmm.
A solid fence that would allow them to be, um, not visible until they're, you know, they're needed, pickup, that would be good. Uh, I think one of the other things about trash enclosures like that is it has to be easy for people to use it, you know, so that, you know, it's, you're gonna have to think about how the people who live there are gonna get into it on a daily basis. But, I mean, the idea of enclosing that and getting it out of, out of the way is, I think, something that would be very helpful to, to, uh, being a good neighbor.
Sure.
Do you know anything that's set up like this right now, either in town, uh, do you have anything like this set up like this, so we could drive by and take a look at it existing?
Have you built any yet, or do you have any units?
I owned the, the unit next to this lot, um, and the trash is kept, the can itself is kept beside the house, you just drag it to the front on the trash base. We don't keep it at the front all the time.
Well, that house has a driveway and a garage, correct?
The driveway listed the garage, yes, but not the other.
But do you have anything set up like this, or do you, uh, have you patterned this after anything else?
I'm looking at the space behind the buildings, that would be...
I mean, just the units?
This unit itself?
Yeah.
Uh, no, it's not, there's nothing, it is unique, that's true.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? Anything more for us, or?
Um, nope, I...
Just out of curiosity, does the planning board have any concerns about the R2 zoning?
Not particularly.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't mind it, even in areas where we have single family, but that's, I think, it's very particular to, to certain planners, certain, I mean, people have opinions about duplexes, but I find especially ranch duplexes not to be, um, from a density perspective, not to have much impact on character of a neighborhood. Um, when you get two-story, I feel like it starts to have a different feel, depending on what's already there. Um, but I think that if you have a smaller facade in the front, this one is actually very narrow, you know, I think the two fifteen-foot wide on the facing street doesn't bother me too much, but I was just looking at the zoning map, too, because there isn't a lot of R2 kinda spotty in this area, but there's like a few properties kind of on the periphery of Sunnyside. But it looks like they might've been like in fill, well, two of them are actually on, um, River and Eagle and Nelson, are those part of this, or no? Are those part of another subdivision?
Another subdivision.
Okay.
There's one on the corner of Hickory and, um, Country Club Drive, on the, uh...
There's an actual two-unit?
On the southwest, it's a two-flat.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I knew the people who...
It's zoned, single-family, though, it seems like, maybe?
Pardon?
It's zoned, single-family, though, you think?
I, I don't know, all I know is that it's been a two-flat since I recall, in the sixties, early seventies, it was a two-flat.
Where, where's that?
On the corner of Hickory and, uh, Country Club.
Yeah, I think you're right.
You know, it's, it used to be green, Francis Michaels used to, used to live there, you know, uh, and had his sign shop in the garage, and, uh, you know, so I, I, I worked there, actually, and, uh, it was a two-flat.
Yeah, is it like the southwest corner?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's a two-unit, yeah.
I don't know how many more there are like that.
Yeah, I don't know either. When I did the analysis before, I just drove, when he came through, I just drove kind of like right around the immediate area to look and see, I mean, most of it was single-family, what, what I saw, but, um, I could go further out, you know, in my land use grab. Um, would you, would the planning board want a more refined site plan from him? Yes? Because this is super conceptual. Yeah.
With some of the enhancements that we discussed this evening incorporated into that site plan would be helpful.
Mm-hmm, okay, showing us how the garbage is gonna help, being some...
Yeah, I'd like to see the footprint on the property with, you know, are there sidewalks? I don't recall.
Um, let's see. Yep, looks like it.
Yeah, I was concerned about that, too, the, the accessibility of the sidewalk with the cars parked in front of the building. So, I'd really like to see a drawing with a footprint.
So, these are scaled to, um, like a, a full parking stall size, and it's, it would be inside the sidewalk, Deb.
Inside the sidewalk?
Yeah, these parking stalls are, that line you're seeing there is actually just a setback line that was on the plat, this is to their property line, so the sidewalk and the Parkway are in front of that, it's not like the driveway's right on the...
Yeah, they're on the right of it.
Yeah, this is just showing you that a, a parking stall can fit on property with the footprint, yeah.
Okay.
The sidewalk is in the Parkway, not on private property.
But with an enhanced site plan, we could see that.
Yes, you could.
Mm-hmm. What ward is this in?
Six.
Seventh. Seventh ward? Yes. Have you talked with the alderman in this ward?
I did previously.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, did you talk to them?
No, no.
I didn't think you did, yeah, but I did previously, and they were not supportive of the multifamily. Um, they know this is on this agenda, but I have not talked to them about that, but we certainly will, I certainly will.
Okay.
Who are the aldermen for the seventh ward?
It's Reggie, right, and is it Reggie and Nora?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, right? Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, because that's who I think I was talking to Reggie. The more questions you have answered and the more material you're able to provide to support this, and support from your alderman, will go a long way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, excuse me, Melissa, is that you talked to the alderman, was it about the R3 or the...
Yes, that was what I talked to him, was about the three-unit, so...
That was the three-unit, yeah.
We'll need to talk to them about the two-units and show them this, yeah.
Okay.
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 Any more questions?
You're gonna get with him?
I will, yeah.
Well, I would think that in, kind of, your conversation with the alderman, the, the idea of the enhanced site plan might be helpful in the conversation.
Mm-hmm.
If you could get that done before you talk to them, probably would be, be easier for them to understand what you're trying to do.
Any other questions that you have from, from us, or are you, you're clear about the next step?
Exactly, I was gonna ask if, uh, decision is being reached tonight, or...
So, they're just, this is just a discussion tonight.
Discussion.
So, in order to, to consider this one again, you have to reapply, um, pay fees again, do all the public notification again, and it sounds like from the planning board's, uh, consensus that they would like to see a refined site plan, probably prepared by somebody who can prepare a site plan, like either an architect or a civil engineer. Uh, they can do a pretty basic site plan for you, it's not a full-blown engineering, we're just talking about a conceptual site plan that's to scale. Um, and, uh, like Chip mentioned, he'd like to see addressed on there some enhancements, so like, um, how you might handle some landscaping improvements along the frontage that might help, um, you know, soften the hardscape and the two-units, and then also addressing how garbage would be handled. Just making sure that there's enough space, because with, with four parking stalls wide in the front, we just wanna make sure that there's enough space to pull those, all four of those trash cans out, and also pull them back in, and that, that's all been accounted for. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Did I miss anything?
Yes, there's an issue you, I heard you say, and just trying to be clear about that as well, that is there any, uh, opposition to the R2 zoning by itself?
It doesn't sound like it in here. Did that make sense, opposition to the...
No.
Rezoning, doesn't sound like it.
Okay, so what I just need to do is to do the plan enhancement.
Right, yeah, because you will, in order to construct it, you're gonna need a variance, and so the planning board can place conditions on that variance if they want to, and it sounds like they've got some opinions about how they'd like to soften this increased density in the area, yeah.
And parking, I think, is just a little, could the parking maybe be scrunched together a, a little bit?
Sure, yeah, I mean, it can be...
That might be helpful from the, maybe getting some fencing off to the side, bringing the garbage out.
Mm-hmm.
Might benefit.
This, this may be overstepping, but, um, I would start by talking to your alderman, and I'll tell you why. We can approve, uh, variances, but we can only recommend to city council on your map amendment for the rezoning. And if you don't have the support of your alderman...
Yeah.
I would probably not waste the time and money of reapplying and re-notifying and all of the things that are inherent in this, so I would, if I were you, I would talk to my alderman first, see where they stand, get their support.
There's no... I'm nodding his head a little bit, too.
I, I'm not your alderman, but, I mean, before you spend a bunch of money, literally just arrange a meeting with them, you know, that way, you know, here's my proposal, you know, I'm going from the original concept of a three-unit down, you know, from the density of the neighborhood, I'm doing, trying to do a two-unit, and here's, here's the concept, but, um, you know, obviously, with their recommendations of, you know, like the garbage and maybe tightening up the parking space, you know, that, you could draw that on, on a piece of paper yourself, so they could actually help visualize, you know, what you're trying to accomplish, and, but, you know, versus spending money for, you know...
Not you, my alderman?
No, I'm not.
All right. No other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, PB 2024-4-3, a final plat for a major subdivision for Quick Trip Corporation at Riverstone Parkway and Route 45 and 52, fourth ward.
I'd say, you know, third time's a charm, but it's not, it's fourth time. Um, this is a really good lesson about the fact that it's really good to wait until you're done with engineering, so. Um, I do have the letter from Neil, um, he submitted it last week, so, um, it's said to go on the agenda, I mean, I haven't sent it to the attorneys, but in my head, and the mayor and the city manager know that it's, we're planning to have this on the agenda for November 3rd, so, um, it's exciting, I don't know. Yeah, the plat, funny enough, really hasn't changed a whole lot in all of this, but that's usually the concern, is that something could change. Um, so are you, are you any questions for me? No? Okay.
Do we need to...
I do, yeah, so, um, remember last time, we brought it back in July, and again, I thought they were gonna go, um, because, um, I mean, just to back up, I think Mike took it before I started, and then, but it was like, um, it had long expired, so like the code says, three months, it had, from planning board to city council, and so, um, I just brought it in December thinking that it would, we would resolve it, then we ran into pond issues, and they went back to the drawing board, kind of revisiting the site plan a little bit, which was much more extensive than we thought. Um, and so in July, I thought we were like very close, and then really what's happened is that every time there's been a review, not on Neil's end, but on the engineer's end, it's been almost a month before we've gotten a resubmital. And I don't know if it's the, I think it's just been that the engineer is very busy, I don't, I really don't know. So, um, it's just very, it's just delayed, the engineering process significantly. So, they are planning to move dirt this year, still, and from my understanding is that, um, they are able to work through the entire winter. So, the, I, I have like a schedule from the project manager, I just haven't written it down, he gave me all this kind of expectations for construction scheduling and whatnot, um, but it's pretty quick, it'll come up faster than you think, yeah. And by being able to work, as long as they keep the earth moving, I think, over winter, they're able to keep, uh, working, which is pretty amazing. Um, but he said by being able to do that during the wintertime, it really does shave off a lot of time once they break ground to actually like start construction, so, in the spring.
Okay. This is turning into a Ricky Rocket's.
Right. So, yeah, so I need, so even the one from July, it's like right now, like I think last week, the ninety days, it lapsed, and so, I think the attorney would probably be okay, but we were here tonight anyways, and so it just makes it cleaner when we take it to city council.
Okay.
So, what are we being asked to do tonight?
You are recommending approval of the final plat of subdivision, this document that's in the packet.
All right.
Which is the same document you approved last time. And there's conditions, and they're the same conditions that were wrought forward last time as well, except there's been engineering approval, so. I don't know, Deb keeps doing this one, and she reads the findings really nicely.
Okay.
Standards used to evaluate major subdivisions.
All righty.
Thanks, Deb.
Okay. And we're recommending to city council, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, in case...
And then there's a, there's a blank page in between, Deb, so I don't know if you saw this, I messed this up.
I did.
So, on the backside...
Yeah.
Is the recommendations.
Okay. Case PB 2024-4-3, a final plat for a major subdivision for Quick Trip Corporation at Riverstone Parkway and Route 45 and 52. I would like to make a motion that we recommend approval of this, uh, plat, um, and I would like to include the following standards that we use to evaluate a major subdivision. Definite provision has been made for a public water supply system that is sufficient in terms of quantity, dependability, and quality to provide an appropriate water supply for the type of subdivision proposed. Adequate provision has been made for a public sewage system, and that such a system will comply with federal, state, and local laws and regulations. All areas of the proposed subdivision which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards or requiring special precautions have been identified by the subdivider, and that the proposed uses of these areas are compatible with such conditions. The subdivider has the financial ability to complete the proposed subdivision in accordance with all applicable federal, state, local laws and regulations. The proposed subdivision will not result in the scattered subdivision of land that leaves undeveloped parcels and land lacking urban services between developed parcels. The subdivider has taken every effort to mitigate the impact of the proposed subdivision on the public's health, safety, and welfare. Have they posted a bond for this?
They, it's a condition.
Okay.
Yep.
That is my motion.
But they have their marching orders for the bond, or it's gonna be a letter of credit, not a bond, so...
We need to, uh, to read in the recommend, recommended...
Yes, she's getting ready to.
Yeah, on the back page, Deb, back here.
The back page. Oh, yes, 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 yes. Um, the recommended conditions include final... The subdivider has the financial ability to complete the proposed subdivision in accordance with all applicable federal, state, local laws and regulations. The proposed subdivision will not result in the scattered subdivision of land that leaves undeveloped parcels and land lacking urban services between developed parcels. The subdivider has taken every effort to mitigate the impact of the proposed subdivision on the public's health, safety, and welfare.
Have they posted a bond for this?
They, it's a condition.
Okay.
Yep.
That is my motion.
But they have their marching orders for the bond, or it's going to be a letter of credit, not a bond.
Do we need to, uh, to read in the recommend, recommended?
Yes, she's getting ready to.
Yeah, on the back page, Deb, back here.
The back page. Yes, 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 yes. The recommended conditions include final review and approval by the city engineer, provide the required security for any public improvements, provide an alta survey of the dedication parcel, provide a full covenant and warranty deed to all such dedicated lands and improvements in proper form for recording, or as otherwise determined by the city attorney, and five, provide a title policy for the city in a sum of not less than $10,000, or as otherwise determined by the city attorney.
So we have a motion by Deb Terrell.
Barry McCracken, I'll second.
And a second by Barry McCracken. Any questions, comments?
Just specifically on the recommended conditions. The first one, the final review and approval by the city engineer, that's already occurred, correct?
The, uh, engineering is done. So when they bring the Mylar in, he has to review it, Neil has to sign it, like the actual plat.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
So does Beverly, actually. You have to sign the plat.
All right.
Roll call.
Chip Rohr?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes, the final plat is recommended for approval, and will be on the November 3rd, city council.
Other business?
I do, so I think, um, I did, we, we announced it last week, oh, I thought we did last month, that, um, Arthur resigned.
Yes.
Oh!
I thought we did announce it. I think we did.
Why did I miss that?
We did read his...
Because I just gave it to you.
I think we did.
Yeah, it was, it was in August.
No.
No, no.
We got it like...
Yes, September.
Like, right before the meeting.
We did discuss, I mean, I know we...
I think we did talk about, maybe it was after the meeting? Maybe you left, maybe you left. So I, Beverly wanted me to read the letter.
Yeah.
Um, it says, "Dear members of the City of Kankakee Planning Board, I'm writing to formally resign from my position of this, on the City of Kankakee Planning Board effective immediately. It's been a privilege to serve our community in this role, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have contributed to the city's planning and development efforts. I appreciate the collaboration and dedication demonstrated by my fellow board members and city staff during my tenure. Due to unforeseen personal and professional obligations, I'm no longer able to commit the necessary time and attention to fulfill the responsibilities of my position. I believe this decision is in the best interest of both the board and the community that we serve. Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this important work. I remain supportive of the board's efforts and wish you continued success in guiding the growth and development of the City of Kankakee. Sincerely, Arthur Lacks." How long was he on?
At least two term, probably eight years, I would say, something like that.
Around eight years?
Wow.
So I don't know what you guys do, but in Homer, we used to go out. I mean, we would like, we would see people off, you know? We didn't do anything for Susan either.
No, we didn't.
Just putting it out there.
We did something like that, we lived together maybe two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that might be a good, good thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
How are we going to fill these vacancies?
So, um, I have not had a chance to verbally connect with the mayor since I sent, so I did send him the, um, I did get the draft of a job description, so, I presented that as like an option, because that's what we used to do in Homer. We didn't do that in, in Orlando, we would just post it on the website that we were looking for commissioners, but in Homer, they would post it on the website as like a, like a job description.
Oh, see, we have to come up behind people and put a pillowcase. Oh, nobody wants to do it.
So, and I, I think we have a, obviously, a very high social media presence, so I think that there's a lot of ways to do that. I actually was just online today, we, there was a post that we did in Homer in 2021 that was really cute, it had like a, one of those like megaphone things, and it was like, "Looking for a commissioner," you know? It's like something that'll grab attention. I don't, I mean, we're talking about it, being more aggressive about trying to get interest. And then, uh, like I said, the mayor did make an announcement last night at city council.
I think, probably brainstormed some ideas.
Mm-hmm.
Probably...
I think we should all submit any suggestions to Chris that we might have.
That would be super helpful, yeah.
Bruce Matthews used to be on the board. I mean, Bruce was on the board for a long time, even before where I got on the board, and I got on the board in 2008, and he was already on. But, um, I'm, I'm still in touch with Bruce, and I'm still working with Bruce on projects. And the, the thing that I, the, the reason I'm bringing that up is to, his civil engineering...
It's helpful.
Profession and discipline was very helpful as we went through sorting all of this stuff out. I really, um, I felt reinforced by his presence.
Yeah.
So something like that might be...
That's why I was saying, maybe we could brainstorm a little bit, because, you know, if there's a certain, you know, backgrounds or something like that that we need to, you know, plug in, or if there's, you know, if we need to, you know, different, you know, wards or something like that, that we want to, rather than hit, you know, one, one word or something.
Well, that's, that's been the big boogaboo in the past, is that we have always, traditionally, the mayors have always tried to get representation from as many wards as possible. And that makes it hard, because if you're looking for people that can bring something to the table in the way of, you know, their, their area of expertise or their background or whatever, and then you try to find that person in Ward Six, you know, it, it really makes it difficult.
You may not, yeah.
And then quite frankly, um, we're probably the only board of all the boards in Kankakee County that don't get paid. And that's a problem. People say, "Well, what is, what's the stipend?" Or "What's, what is the pay?" And when you tell them, "Oh, nothing," they're like, "What?"
And then you actually have to do like work.
And I don't mind that. I've never wanted to get paid, because I think we're here because we want to be here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that's, that's always been better, I think, than somebody that's sitting here to get fifty, a hundred dollars, whatever.
Yeah.
But, um, it is a problem when you tell people that there's no compensation.
I mean, no commissioners I've ever worked with have been paid.
Yeah.
At either municipality. I mean, I think it's, I think it's more uncommon, like, you know, I mean, it's more rare that they actually get paid. And everybody, every one of them is just like you guys.
Compared with like city council and the county board and all of that, you know?
Yeah.
They get paid big bucks, so.
It's like, really? They're getting, what is it, Lance, twelve thousand a year or something?
Us, it's, it's about that.
Yeah, and we get...
This much.
And, well, again, not complaining, it's just been an issue. Because I have brought this up to people that I thought would be a good addition to the board, and, you know, it's, it's surprising to me, but it is a deal breaker.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, what wards are you guys in? What ward are you in, Beverly?
Third.
What about you?
Second.
Fourth?
Sixth.
All sixth.
You're sixth, too?
No, three.
Third? Okay. Do we know what Steve and Jose?
He lives, Steve lives next to you, doesn't he? He's in your ward?
Um, no, he's in second.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Line is...
Yeah, yeah, he, yeah, he's, he's...
Line's really close.
Yeah.
He's in the second? What about Jose?
Jose lives near us. He's in West Kankakee.
So he's third, probably?
Probably.
Yeah, because the mayor's in the sixth, so, but across the alley is the second.
We have the hardest time getting people from one, seven, and five.
Okay.
One thing that I've noticed over the years is, is that, that sitting on this, on this board seems to be sort of a springboard for people to get involved in other aspects of the government. We've seen a lot of people just be here and then boom, they're elsewhere.
Yeah, I think that's pretty common practice, is that if somebody's looking to be an alderperson or even run for mayor or any kind of elected positions, that they, um, many of them will start out at the, at a planning commissioner or planning board. Everywhere I've worked, it's been like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. The mayor in Homer that was there for two terms served as a planning commissioner for like a long time, like, like ten years or something like that. And I will tell you that I think it's so super valuable, you know, when, to be in the room for both of those meetings and know the ones that have that background when we're working on development projects, it does, um, it does help a lot. Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
You oppose, Lance?